Everybody is going back to the back. We'll go ahead and get all back up.
Glad I remember that you like that.
All right, well, let's jump right back into marketing. We look at history again, this is showing, I believe, our commitment to the marketing. So we have sizably doubled all what we're doing. We did do one dose will change, I believe it was. We put full-time, just because of Main Street, the director position now, because we have a Main Street manager, fully directors, fully funded out this position, so that's for a big increase in that. But that was from twenty twenty-two to twenty twenty-three. This year again, it's just the increases for the cost of power. The only increase of note that we want to make mention of is under maintenance contracts. It's line four twenty-six, four twenty-four, on an issue of seventy-six hundred dollars. So page seventy, yes sir. I will say the page numbers, please, sorry about that. This is something we're excited about, so. Yes, page seventy-two explains a little bit better. But basically what we're doing, to make the long story short, is seventy-six hundred dollars we're adding. It's called placer data. So placer data, we use, attracts cell phone data. It does not track any personal information, it just tracks where it sees that a person is here, and where does that person go? We want to do this to start tracking people who are going, for instance, to the water park, people who might have gone to Little Miss Hartsville, where they go throughout the city, Walmart, where they shopping, and it tracks just general information about what that person's doing. Doesn't get information about who they are, or where their demographics are, which is basically what they're doing. We can use this information to find out what our impact is on the community, specifically for next two hours, it brings in, say, eighty-nine hundred, eighty-nine thousand people to the area, or its tickets being sold, where those people go afterwards. So we want to do that. We use this when we did, this was another part of that ICSC training that we did for retail recruitment. We saw this being successful by other cities, and we wanted to tap into that as well.
Daniel, I'd like to add that it's also going to be very valuable to other departments, because it can tell us where people come into the city from, have they come from this way, or do they come up one fifty-one? And that will be important for Streets and Grounds, and, you know, when we're working with DOT. So it's, it's a, it is a, it is something I think that can be very valuable for multiple departments, and not just for marketing.
They want to use it for grants as well.
We'll use it for grants, additional layer of data we can use for grants. So there's several companies. So for instance, when we look at our trade area, we typically look at our trade area population, which is around forty thousand people. That's just based on census information, based on driving a polygon around the city. Depending where you're coming from. This will actually give us a true idea of how people come in, like how many people went to Walmart. When we ran it first time in twenty twenty-one, or two, we had a million hits at Walmart back there. So we'll look to see what that will mean, as long as it is, so we're going to contract this out.
I mean, an example is, they were able to pull what day in the last year that we had the most people in the, in the downtown area of Hartsville. And they were able to tell us how many people were here. And it was our holiday open house that night. And, you know, we had over five thousand people in just the downtown area. So that's an interesting, it helped, I mean, from an asset to even public safety, it helps prepare.
But just to reiterate, is it not collecting any personal information, because we're not going to be broken here?
So is that, is that a app?
This is, this is, it is kind of like an app, it's a program, but it's accessing public information that is basically, your cellphone is you, and it's tracking when a user walks into an area. So the fact that everyone's carrying one of these, it's very easy to figure out where to get them.
So it not only tracks the number, but it tracks maybe the home base of where that person is?
Yeah.
Does it still own is the home dial?
But our, our basis is where they come to a location, where they're coming from, just generally is good to know. Like for instance, for the water park, where are they coming from? We know we have Charlotte Market, we know we have Desta Market, it's way, as far as two hours away. But then what are they, I really want to know what they're doing after the fact. They come to the water park, do they go out for eat afterwards, how does that happen?
Well, I don't know, people at Walmart, I've never seen anybody on one.
And I, I think I've seen a million of them there, so.
All due respect, you sleep with the crowds sometimes.
You know, like, that's, that's interesting, but I think to see how it's back to downtown.
Yes.
Where the merchants, Ben, Ben has got to be more involved, like, you know, it's still like a sleepy town downtown. You put a five, certain things in out, and I'm not going to jump on the road, they got to be a little more engaged if you're coming, especially in the summertime, if you have to be prepared to the water park, air attack, out here, and the ice room. To me, downtown, like a lot of both these shops.
If we could know, if they could just track where the Coker students are going, you know, that's a thing. Just trying to get all the graphics. So it's, it's really intriguing information, I have seen it successfully from other cities. And again, it's, that's, you do have to pay for the access to the data, but once you have it, you can run the program.
Now, would this be shared with, like, merchants or Chamber?
We certainly could, I mean, this data would be available, we'd work reports and show where people are doing. So for instance, when a chamber has a benefit, we can see what happens afterwards, see what they got. So it's exciting stuff. The company I was used to using is called placer AI, but there's several other companies that are able to do it. Okay. Next up is, again, another public service division, but it's in the general, this is Operation Magnus. This is a relatively new department, as you can see from the timeline, we just really kind of created a couple times. This is all the work order system, it's two employees. And like I said, we had some negatives in here, but we also figured out where we charged more appropriately for the things that they're wearing. So Joe ordered something for planning zoning, that really should come out planning zoning, for instance, like a new.
Has a lot of the feet on that.
Yeah. Well, that's what our, we'll see the negative of the public service department. Any questions about this, this is a relatively small part, yes, Amy?
Someone comment on, on the, what he does, does make a short order, that's why he puts that button in there.
That's right.
Then he knows which department it's in.
Exactly. So he's tracking it for all of us as well. Another way to maintain accurate figures. Parks Recreation. So this is, we do have an increase here, excuse me. One big thing is, as we did have it split in the previous year budget, fifty percent was next to now, fifty percent was Parks Recreation, this year the director positions fully funded by this. We also have continued to provide that coordinated position that's back in here. And then they also were recipients of an increase from the COLA. So we have the maintenance workers, we have workers who are in there.
Classic cop?
Classic cop, yes. Classic cop position in addition to COLA. But the classic cop, they were also part of group, those brought up to Little Miss. And the line, we have the capital line in there in addition, but we are again looking for increases to our lights. And then also, we continue to maintain, part of that program to maintain what we have. We're looking at getting some fences, we're doing some stuff right now, the fence is fixed, and also our building, that's one, we're correcting that as well.
Did you get those asphalt quotes over there, Pete, ask for that, right?
We're looking at some asphalt corrections across the city.
And then the other thing would be the resurfacing, as we talked about a few times, for tennis courts.
That's in grants later on, but.
Correct, right, so if y'all don't see that there, it's because they didn't send it for a grant.
We are looking at grants for the tennis courts resurfacing, and we do have an option, and we discussed this more as we go forward, if we, once we, should be worthy, like, through part, to do pickleball in addition to that. We also are looking at, and this is a question from Bob, we can unlock the park and make it up to pickleball, and repurposing the personal pit down there, we do are looking at some push for that as well. In addition to that, we are also going to be looking at a park grant for the track, the walking track and the running track that Coker and the high school use, to resurface that as well. So we have several grants that we're trying to fund, get these things funded as much as we can for that.
I want to ask about Pride Park. When we're out there on Pride, there are several Pride items.
Okay.
Also, there's a big pothole at the driveway.
Okay.
This bird has just had her gun.
Okay.
And it's right next door to that.
We'll take care of that.
And also the signs, they look like they've been cut, but it's actually what was that now?
So I want to order a new Pride Park signs and walking signs to replace all those things, so. But we'll take care of all those. That sign, I saw it too, it's, it looked, I thought it did look like it was cut, but it just. I believe that's in more of a whole sign, because Lotman is experiencing that, so maybe we look at it later. But we'll think that's, that should be done this year, so.
I got a, I got a question. You mentioned no kind of bike trail. You know, I actually have a, we have six no bike trails, like a walking trail on Little Miss Hartsville. Didn't plan to choose to try to complete these bike trails.
So we have a Sawyer, a Sawyer walking trail bike path. And so that was in reference of the child who's killed. I know Bobby was working on a connection between the two. I would like to do more of a full study on our biking and walking trails, to see if there's connectivity to Firewood Park specifically, or back down to the downtown area, so people can kind of do a loop. That would need to be, potentially look at some investments in Firewood Park.
Yes. There's an issue with putting a seminar with bike trail on like Sixth Street, Circus Streets. We're here, we're doing that by department transportation.
So any, any signage that's going to be put on the road needs to be approved by the OT, you cannot go up there and spray anything in the middle of the night, like we learned recently. The main thing for us is that, with Sixth Street, you have that Braves grant that's in force. If that is, if that goes into effect, the multi-use bike trail, walking trail, pedestrian trail be part of that, they've got Sixth Street specifically, and that will help correct and make sure they have an adequate partner, adequate space to drive on along. Since you guys allow biking on sidewalks now, that would be part of that system. And it'd be part of the education. So there are things you can request, the share-rolls, is that what they're called, share-rolls? Share-rolls, non-dicrated, basically it just says that this is a bike lane as well, who's yield to bikes and everything like that. DOT can be, you can request that, but I think that's a recent study.
Part of the initiative now for all research and contracting new construction on roadways, not necessarily create a dedicated bike path, but increase the shoulder width to accommodate bikes and pedestrians on roadways that do not have sidewalks or multi-use paths. As part of Secretary Hollis' initiative.
Okay, so that's sort of, I think what you're saying, so, so we got to get approved with the seminar now. Some people need that, you know, especially the driver. Okay, but that's something we need to consider in the future to actually put in, but first do the plan and go from there. Go get, try to complete that, you know, within the next year, please.
Okay.
All right, thanks.
All right, any other questions on Parks Recreation?
Just one, do they propose, there's one in fourteen, we're projecting thirty-one percent increase in utilities. There's eleven and twelve percent in other departments, why is this one?
We are doing, we're having the lights on more for our practices and whatnot, so a couple of complaints we got from our users at the parks that they weren't able to use the fields later on, because of these issues we talked about, where they had to kind of turn them off on, and they had to turn off manually. So because we're going to be allowing more light usage, we just need to go for that. Any other questions? Moving on to Streets and Grounds, again, another public service department in the general fund. The major increases here is this liberal wage, this is the line share, these things came up. We did also increase some wigglers, we have the capital in here from the new tractor, and there was a couple of increases possible.
You'll see there, I worked closely with Philip and Stephen on this, and they gave me some, you'll see, on page eighty-eight. If you want to put to that.
Big book.
The big book. I would, once again, and I said it out of other departments, they did really well being, you know, good about here, they're spending it not, and letting us take away, you know, lower some of those categories that they're not. And one thing we really tried to do is true up the budget, and reassuring them that if you're really not spending it, we will try to make it up in other areas where you do need it. And you can see that there, multiple depart, multiple areas where they're decreasing. So do thank them for that, I know it's tough for departments to give up dollars on the budget, but they, they did need it, and we do appreciate that.
Karen, look, line seven twenty, there must be something we switched, with downtown maintenance goes from just up two thousand dollars, is that based on what work, and people were going to be more making a schedule?
Sure, I think that is our push for, one thing that y'all will see that we're doing is, one, the plants, it gets very expensive, so we do have that in there. But one thing, two, that we're doing is you'll see the electrical things that we've done downtown. This year we did a few big projects to try to correct it. Philip, if you want to speak to the electrical issues that we're facing downtown, I get a, I get a lot of fearful on this one.
So a lot of the electrical outlets that are spaced throughout Carolina Avenue have different trees, basically. They are old, outdated, some of them are non-functional, some of them aren't necessarily a safety hazard, but they need to be updated to prevent them from becoming a safety hazard. Some of the increases with downtown maintenance is, cost of plants has gone up, cost of bulk has gone up tremendously. So trying to account for that, but also minimize the impact of spending too much more, creating same aesthetic that's currently down there, and not improving somewhat a little bit.
Yeah, it's, it's a minor increase, I'd almost like to say increase it more and do more.
Well, I would say more.
I had the same thought, I would think you could put it up more, you know, the better you make that look.
Well, when you go with ornamental plants, the things of that nature, I mean, they are, I mean, I don't really understand how those particular items are going up in price, but apparently the question accounts for all things and not just certain things. And we're trying to get about that as much as possible.
The same thought about park maintenance and supplies, two thousand dollar increase, you know, it's business stuff. And I don't know what that, I'm just joking.
Well, those, those numbers aren't based on what we see in the cost, that's only based on, it's not just our inventory number, but we certainly can increase any of those.
So what we can do is ask for two, as nice as it has, contingency, so if we drop the water, we're going over that, then that's an area that I'm able to dip into, because one thing you are trying for is to bring our parks and our downtown up to it. Stephen and I have come up with a plan on how many outlets that we can replace, because you can remember, the lights, the trees downtown really stay on, that's right. Absolutely, one thing, they said, Karen, we're going to do it over this year, we need more money for flowers downtown. I said, it doesn't matter, because over, you got to have beautiful flowers downtown. So we are having those discussions to make sure, we're not going to skip that one.
Two, on the electrical upgrades, granted I wasn't here before, but from what I've gathered from Stephen, there's been a lot more events downtown, and a lot of those events are asking for electrical services to be able to do different things. Part of that is making sure that we offer that electrical service to those different events. So the local businesses can put on things that increase their revenue and also increase, increase traffic downtown as well. Waves will help other vendors and different businesses.
What I would suggest is, I'm glad you looked at it, an increase in this, we're pulling back some ledger, and make a note of it, and see what we can come up with some additional stuff, if you guys want to addition.
Yeah. He can do this more quickly than Stephen.
He's, oh, go ahead, but he's the actor.
On the side, on the track park, outlets, is there only outlet available on the stage, is that beyond the occasion?
I don't know if there's one in bathrooms.
I know, I believe there is more than one.
I believe there is one in the bathroom, but.
Look, look at no one there somewhere, like no way.
There's one in the stadium.
At the pavilion?
Yeah.
Where the, where the walkin' street?
Yeah, well, yeah.
Yeah.
It's one near St. Jesus, somewhere in the center, with a tree. It's out there, and I think it's one by the street battle of poets, I mean, so, but I noticed one.
I know there's more than one, but I can't remember exactly how many there are, but it's, we can forget.
Yeah, because I, I mean, you know that, because if there's no outlet where I can spawn music to the party, then I have to burn gas, burn the electricity, for me.
I got a question, Adam, seven forty-five, proof repaired?
Yes.
You got five hundred dollars, all right. Most of Hartsville, those streets under the purview of Sackman and D O T, why you have five hundred dollars?
So that's an increase to five hundred dollars, what's the first number again?
Seven forty-five. They look, they, they just, sorry. Thank you. Well, actually, you take it in the right section.
So we have sidewalk repairs and maintenance of seventeen thousand dollars, we do have some sidewalks, particularly in downtown.
That's how it's street repaired.
One side repairs five hundred, that we, that's for a pothole that we need to fix, because it's a safety hazard. Stephen, what would, or Philip, what would we use that for, five hundred dollars?
Page eighty-two.
Page eighty-two, and the street repair seven forty-five.
Definitely, it's new this year, because we don't have the district law, so we're going to change that.
Venue code.
Well, we do own some city-owned streets, I mean, we do have some streets that are under the purview of City Parks, but they're not owned by the county, or the Sackman Department of Transportation.
College Avenue.
I mean, it's not a ton of running to be able to help out, but then that does give us room to patch potholes a little bit more than cold patch, which, it would be our street, we would want to kind of create somewhat of a fix that would be longer lasting, so we can address it for the next, but year in possible, if something major begins to be done. But cold patch, you'll keep throwing that, but five hundred dollars amount for that, keep.
Five hundred dollars, give you a truck out there, you can ask about a guy.
That's true too, but, yeah.
Yeah, that's my advice, although, you know. It's okay, I usually send an email to DOT, S D O T, for potholes. And some I think we should repair.
With, as I said, if it's a dire situation, we will patch some things just to make sure it's a safety, address for safety concerns, but we'll be able to, Department of Transportation, but now the city does own a few streets.
I have a lot of issues with one or two private, private streets. We're not even paid for that either.
I would say though, this, like he said, if this is street, it needs to be repaired, that, I mean, we're going to fix it, right? But that's more of an emergency type situation, that's going to be something we're going to fix. If we see it routinely, that's not like, you know, panels like this. Like, say, we end up going way over this year, we're wrong, isn't it? We're hearing a lot more streets than we used to, and they expect that to be fixed as well.
So this is because it's a new line, and we want to start tracking it, that's it, so give us some time on that one.
And then that's the same thing with operations maintenance, you know, when we saw so much go down, it's passive rather than new departments.
You keep on changing as we get used to it.
I want to true up the budgets as much as I can.
So we're going to talk about Bright Street, we're talking about Fletcher, with cloud, but we, we've not talked about Wilk Circle, the, and.
So Wilk Circle, so Wilk Circle is, I'm trying to work with a private entity to fix it, they're probably a lot better. Wilk Circle does maintenance ends at the circle. It looks like someone had actually gone in and done some cold patch to already, I believe that's what resulted, us talking to the group to do it, there's still a section needs to be repaired. Private roads and water, these five case spaces, we did the cloud, we did our due diligence, we looked through and discovered we did own that one section of pipe, and then, you know, we correct cars to it, which I believe the contractors finally cuts down for May. And then find a residence that'll be fixed, and we did come in under budget, so we're doing the same at work hallway. But for the state roads, such as Bright Street, we're working with the state to try and get this fixed. That is on, that request for C C C, for Wright Street, the entire street. And then Fletcher, we are going to be working with DOT to talk about some drainage issues out there, because that's really what's causing the water pool to close, low spot, and then potentially do it some repair work with a private individual who's interested in having this repaired. So we're trying to get to do this, all this without any impact to the budget, but we might look and see what we might use for seven forty-five, that five hundred dollars.
I, I feel honored to continue to improve the person that has the hidden.
Absolutely. Anytime that it's. And I believe they're very interested in keeping that, and that's at least, just the conversation they have with me about it, they're interested in maintaining and increasing, because that's really what's causing the issues, the trucks driving over. And I do think they understand the pair is responsible for it.
So that requires a few of those. You know, for years I've been talking about possibility of having some music downtown, and we can't do what Market Common did, for Nancy Nalorian, Florence, smaller town. They have little speakers up on the light pole, just that sound great, and the merchants said they're looking very low cost way good, it just adds to the ambiance of downtown, so maybe staff to staff, don't think it costs anyone to see something like that. I don't think it'd be very expensive, I don't know if it'd come down to Streets and Grounds or Main Street, or where we put it in the budget, but it's just one of those neat little things to work on, when they've got the satellite radio hooked into it.
And absolutely, I already actually talked with, with Matt about doing it, I had said that it came up in previous discussions and something that they did get pushed through, I talked to him and Michelle about that, because I absolutely agree, it's one of my favorite things, I go to Market Commons.
I love them.
I love going there.
One of the issues we had to pass, because we talked about before, first it started out with putting in on buildings, and we ran into some issues with buildings and power, so we liked the idea of now we have some power repairs, so the trees are an option, to put little speakers up, and now the power's going to be repaired, we have some options, so. We definitely look into that, I think it's a great idea.
And we, and we, we still did leave it in the budget, it's under special projects and services in Main Street, for Main Street experience enhancement of ten thousand. It's on, if you go back, it's on page fifty.
Big book.
The big book.
Big book.
Yes.
Down on the Butler Inn, the, the South Sixth Street and where Butler High School is on that. There is no power there outside anyway.
It's a conversation we could have.
Well, we'll just thank you for that contact, because that's something that I know Matt and Michelle, they'll be glad to reach out with them and figure out how they did it successfully.
And there's opportunities to park or park communication.
Yes.
There, you know, we, we talked about splitting the cost of doing the lights downtown, but the holdup is of course the light and power. So as we repair the power, we have more options.
I believe it makes everything better.
I know. I don't think I hire you to speak to us.
We never stop it.
Any other questions about Streets and Grounds?
Well, I want to thank this group for doing a good job, this file department, man, I, yes. I talked to them quite a bit, and when people complain being hard to do about this, and I, and I tell them, I'm going to be looking at the park. You have a lot of area code, so, you know.
And that's, that's another reason why we're.
We appreciate you playing with this driveway too, Philip.
Next is the museum. So the, you do see a decrease in the museum, the museum of our salaries cost. We did move from a full-time employee, that was one of the positions we promoted last year to help pay for the offset with fees, because we needed to find about three hundred thousand dollars in August. But we have had great success with the part-time person there. And so a museum assistant has been very helpful, and then also we have still some grants that are allowing us to do that, the, was it the?
Digitization.
Digitization, that's still ongoing. Yes, and so we have added to budget, but we're doing quite well with that. Yes, and so we have added to budget, uh, but we're doing quite well with that, and I believe, you know, the museum, along with the rest of the staff increase to the marketing staff, they're all working together as a team to help process the cost, so, we kept it in as just a part-time person, we seem to have, had success with that, so we wanted to keep that, that's a savings for us.
And I know, I know, probably notice the increase of the media marketing that we're doing around the museum, right, they've been doing a great job, one thing is they're planning next year, you'll see they have that six thousand in building maintenance and supplies, and, uh, one thing that we noticed, one day it was Andrea's birthday, and it's the day that the museum stood out the most to me, because there were balloons outside, okay? I was like, I never noticed the museum like this, but anyways, it, we talked about that day, and something I'd already been talking about, is brightening up the outside, so adding lights, so that you really can see the museum, it kind of blends in right now, um, so they have some great ideas to try to enhance the look of that and continue the paint inside.
Potentially.
Try to look pretty.
And we're potentially moving in some ways.
What can they do to really show off that?
Well, if you go to a lot of cities that have big museums, they'll, they've got a special exhibit, they'll have a sign or something outside that feature, you know, two signs or whatever.
They're limited, what you can see with them, and we'd like to go ahead and increase, and we hit the same common maintenance center here, um, there's a couple new trees in there, they're probably, or not new trees, old trees that can really, the seating can enhance visibility, so.
They're doing great things.
And they're partnering, again, Haley and you have some team that do their job.
I'm thinking about the, the Silver Rocks exhibit, you know, that's very, if you can put something outside, you know, many people know.
There's a brand new exhibit there now, that was, I think the Silver Rocks exhibit was very successful, very successful.
Because actually, some of the people that came in from out of town, they had trouble actually finding the museum.
Right. So, we're, we're gonna do some improvements to that, obviously, because that is a vital piece for our heritage, so, okay. Moving on. Um, moving on to airport, so airport, um, again, we're contracted with Rise Era, um, it is pretty much a.
Did you get it coming in?
No, it's, it's coming up next, I have it, I have it backwards, I believe, yep.
Yeah.
So, jump ahead, we're gonna get, we're, well, let's do cemetery, sorry, alright, so cemetery, um, so the contract is up this year. Well, I searched the interwebs, and I found John, his gram, and trig image, and in front of cemetery, so it's exciting picture, I wanted to highlight that.
There you go, the gaster there on the rock.
We do. Um, as you can see. So, uh, the main thing here is that we do an increase, this is a direct result of the increase in barrels we're doing, so whenever we reach a threshold, we have to pay, um, if you go to our, um, we go back. So, if you go through the lineups, you'll see that, um, once you reach a certain threshold, we start paying additional fees on top of that, for this, this has ever since COVID, they kind of increased the barrels, so this is just a result of that, um, again, the contract is up for a little bit, so, we're rolling in June, so we might have a new person, let's start, we will land on data on the contract.
And each night.
We'll recharge a per, recharge a new man.
Um, Brandon, we'll recharge for, you have, um, this date, one group, uh, during the week, five hundred, we'll be leaving. If you would like to look at any of these schedules, or things in the contract, let us know, um, just if you have, with that experience, if you're busy, um, if you have any comments, just let us know, we can adjust it.
Even if I go off of you, yeah, I'll do it, alright, I know what to say, okay.
Okay, cool, um, like I said, we have had a gap, there's some increases, we had to increase it, we held, and obviously, we held off on increases.
We could, we could, we could try and capitalize on that.
Okay, we go back to airport, um, airport operations, again, Rise Era, um, we've been very happy with our management of the, of the M T O, um, I believe they did a good job, you know, with experience, it's pretty, relatively flat.
Yeah, that was one of my questions when I, yeah, so, that contract, um, the farm white wills, that will allow.
It is, we, we do have, we, we always can improve, you know, we want to communicate with them, I think they're doing a lot, they're trying to do a lot, which is exciting, I mean, they're the ones who go to those lines.
Yeah.
Um, and it's just, you know, it's just, it's city property, so you just have to be aware of what's going on.
Yeah, I mean, I like when they do, they say, well, I'm calling air, so.
They're, yeah, that's good.
And that, that was pretty good, that made you aware of that, I had friends that had an art, you had an airport, you had.
Yeah, um, one very kind of fun little thing here that was not included, because we got it fully funded, um, so our SWIP, which is our stormwater prevention plan, um, had expired at the airport, and so we needed to go ahead and get that, that can be a sizable engineering cost, thirty, forty thousand dollars. Um, tasked out to figure out how to pay for it, and they got it right, got it fully a hundred percent funded, so a forty thousand dollar grant to, to pay to our SWIP, stormwater prevention plan, and, um, it's, uh, it's the handle this year for us, which is exciting. We are in a, what we call a gap year, as the college is going, uh, with federal funding, we're not gonna have any federal grants, but soon we will, we'll, we'll do our, run with, um, that's gonna be a federal, um, grants, and those are pretty lucrative, um, or not lucrative, uh, feasible for us, um, the match thing is only ten percent, but that's gonna be something coming up the next couple of years, a little bit.
There was, there was a small grant match, but with that.
Small grant, yes, ten percent grant, actually, yeah.
So, there was a grant, but we're doing that this year, and gonna get it done, so it won't be.
We're doing a study on it, that's right, and then we're gonna go forward, so next year, but there's not a big grant like we had in the interim.
Correct.
Which we can, okay.
There's, there's not a big, before I ask you a question, anyway.
Sure.
Um, I think several months ago, we had this storm run off from the airport, somebody was there close by, but that probably resolved.
Yes, we discovered that toward the rear of the property, there was a buildup in the pond area that was essentially no longer acting as a pothole, was that what?
The pond was serving, uh, the detention pond instead of a retention pond, and some of the outlets were a little bit lower than they probably should have been, not necessarily should have been, I mean, it acted like it, but, uh, prevent that storm run off into, the issue we were having, we corrected, uh, I mean, now, if you had a major storm or being, it may not be corrected, but I think that would be at least by working with, now, after our correction, it would have to be a sizable event where probably the whole city would be underwater before we were able to handle that issue again.
We took care of it, though.
Yes, but she called me the other day, a lot of weeks, a couple of weeks ago, and I was like, I do not wanna hear from you, but she said, that was a good thing, I didn't have any problems, I'm not.
Yeah, that's good to know, then, alright.
Leave that part off the record.
Alright, right.
No, but we handled that, uh. Yes, I, I asked Brandon and Phillip to take a look at that for the entity that is called, because she wants to be underwater, and so they did a good job.
But, we spoke to her, and I spoke to her multiple times, and, and I told her to give me a call back, if something.
Yep. We're going to do it. Alright, sure. Okay, that is the general fund. Now, lunch will be here in forty minutes, so we can jump, start jogging into enterprise fund, if you guys want.
Okay.
Okay?
Peter Law.
Peter Law, alright. Alright, so enterprise fund, again, is water sewer Neptune Island, um, this is another breakdown of the expenditures for going on, so, green is revenue, blue is expense, um, as you can see, um, it is doing quite well, um, we do have more expenditures here, because we built some capital, as you guys are already aware, um, moving forward, um, right now, we have, um, fifty, again, thirteen percent increase, uh, about six hundred thousand, that is capital, but still a little bit, six hundred thousand already increased to our enterprise fund, that is water sewer Neptune.
You're right with that.
So, we look at our water rents, our, our water rents, our sewer rents, and our wastewater, our water rents, and we look at what is coming, what's coming, and we also look at our Neptune Island admissions, and then we see what the trends are, so we look at the trends of.
Yeah, well, just because, oh, Chester here does a ton of work, especially for the water park side of this, you can have multiple sources of revenue that comes from the water park, so there is quite analysis, so we pull in the data of average attendance, how many were sold that day, we have to look at the food, cabanas, retail sales, season passes, we look at the total numbers, we look at the run that's occurred, now for our water sewer side, we look at the number of customers, and the average growth that we see over each year, and also we have the ordinance, that's a three percent increase, right, so we take those two, take those two factors in, to come up with that percentage increase each year, and one thing that I did when I first started, John, you may remember, we're at a grease tonight, um, we really started to true up our revenues, I don't know if you saw a decrease, the first few years I was here, made a big push, I was like, we gotta keep this as conservative as we can, what are we really bringing in, so that we can see what we truly can spend, and it was something that if you look back in seventeen, eighteen, those budgets, you'll start to see that we actually did a decrease in our water and sewer rents, to true up what are we really bringing in, so, um, there is a lot of work, though, behind the scenes, and if you ever wanna come and talk to Chester, I'll, we can show you some of the spreadsheets that, that we can, to come up with this.
So, you're feeling comfortable with that kind of increase, and how much you feel like it's solid?
Absolutely. If I go one way, it's usually more conservative, I'd rather, um, because that, that determines how much I can spend, so I'm not willing to overplan the revenues.
I believe, if you look at some of these numbers, I don't want to speak out term, but I believe we projected much lower revenues than we actually brought in this current year, so that's why our, our expenses and potentially spent, that's something we've, we've spent too, as we try to cut costs every year.
You're gonna surprise yourself a good way.
We always, we always grab the surprising, so, when, when we budge at revenues, and this looks for general fund too, we're, we try to be as conservative possible, because we know that things come up.
And two, I thought you said earlier, that six hundred thousand, I guess the cap.
Exactly, six hundred thousand dollar capital, so we're still looking at six hundred thousand dollar increase, roughly.
Correct.
Um, so, again, the breakup of how the revenues are done, um, water and sewer services, and then twenty-three percent of that is gonna be our admissions from water park and other costs or revenues from that, um, we do have some analysis fees, but you can see where our money's coming from. Um, some of the areas that grow, to answer your other question, Tommy, um, this is what we're looking at, and what we're experiencing, water rents, we're looking at a six percent increase, wastewater five percent, general admissions, because we are looking at a small increase to general admissions, if we do, when we start having increases to services, that's twenty-four percent, and then hospitality, again, is doing well, so we're able to transfer some monies for that, seven percent increase. Um, this is a breakdown of our expenditures for, I split up, well, this is water sewer Neptune Island, to show what's going on, um, you have, and operating expenses, the salaries, benefits, debt services, and then transfer general fund, which is based on our calculation, um, and then I wanted to break down a little bit further Neptune Island, because it is kind of an interesting fund, uh, that's what takes to run Neptune Island, all the different money that goes there, and you'll find the revenues for that when we go through enterprise, before you just expect your revenue, alright, any question with revenues? Alright, let's move into the water sewer division, this is five hundred, it's six hundred, it's gonna be pages in your big book. It's going to ninety-eight, and starting on page ninety-eight, um, so the major increase, of course, is gonna be our salaries, um, this again was another one of the groups that did receive some increase to some of their positions, we have some labor positions that have been increased, um, we do have some, a decrease in debt service or operating expenses, but really that's just made up of different things, possibly. Oh, right, yeah, oh, this is the one, so one of the things that we are interested in adding, if you go to page one oh one, this is four, um, two, five hundred, four twenty-four, this is the water side, this is something that Wesley, when he was here, started, been looking at it, so we were maintaining our water tanks, uh, I think in a very inefficient way, whenever one needed to be painted, we kind of got bids, and had to go get it painted, and then we were also separating out our maintenance for, kind of, for things, we had different inspections going on, we decided, he had a contact to do it all together, all up together in the contract, and so what we're proposing this year is to have a contract signed, that can do all of it, part of the contract is gonna be a rotated paint program, they'll maintain the, uh, all the water tanks, when we paint these water tanks, this is our deal, to have to handle, and so having a company that can do inspections, with tank, um, tank painting and maintenance, all in one house, is exceptional for us, um, we believe will actually achieve some savings of what you do with public, um, because how much was the small, the, the ground tank, I think it was three hundred and?
Oh, no, that, that one was the one that, um, Russ had to do.
Right behind us, yeah, right behind us.
That was the one, that's the largest.
It was the largest tank.
Five hundred thousand gallons, maybe.
And how long, how much did that have to paint?
Uh, one to send it, it was a hundred and ninety thousand dollars, but that was years ago, so that cost is, and that's just painting the outside.
That's just painting the outside, that taken care of, so, we're introducing a contract this year to maintain it, uh, we had, we did some betting on this, we believe this is the best option going forward, it does have a, up to a ten-year option, if you want to know that well, so we're bringing a contract.
Phillip was the one that really worked through, I know Wesley had started on it, um, Phillip, is there anything more to add to it, I know he explained it to me, um, it was a little bit confusing.
Yes, so, water tanks on the outside and the inside, I mean, they're painted, because you gotta keep water capable for drinking water, um, part of that, especially on the outside tanks, UV rays can degrade the paint surface, um, you have mold and mite, and they also get, it's not really a degradation process, it takes a little bit longer for those to degrade the paint, but as you get through the paint surface, and you start getting to the actual water tank, and then rust starts to become a factor, and once rust becomes a factor, then, that's very hard to mitigate, um, and as the script shows of building a new water tank, it's a sizable venture, so you don't wanna let that go to the point of no return, and if you go through some smaller towns in South Carolina, especially my hometown, you'll see water tanks that look atrocious, um, a part of this program will, it puts your water tanks on a rotational basis of either seven, eight, or nine years, depending upon how often you paint your tanks, um, depends on the price, and I think we were talking about eight to nine years, those seven's a little overzealous, but your water tanks will be painted every eight to nine years, the outside of them at least, every eight to nine years, so you will always have, I guess, an attraction that people will look at and not be disgusted by, um, it also will clean, paint the inside of the tanks, it will put the schedule for removing lime that builds up inside a tank, which causes your water pressure to go down, because you have less volume sitting inside a tank, and that is based off how, how the tank is also, I know, water pressure sometimes is an issue, so part of that is a reason, uh, semi, not cemetery, Hanes' tank, which is out there on one fifty-one, was recently washed out a couple of years ago, and it had a tremendous amount of lime buildup, so, if you let it keep going, it's gonna cost more and more money to clean those outside, it's putting it on a schedule, it helps for our budgetary expenses, spreading that cost throughout a number of years, and I don't know about other people, but I look at people's water tanks, whether I do it on purpose or not, I mean, subconsciously, everybody sees the water tank in each town that they go to, especially if you got something like Gappy, and you got a pet oil, I mean, that's a big thing that people look at, we don't have that, but, the better your tanks look, the better the town looks, so this kind of provide, puts you on preventative maintenance schedule, so you're not looking to spend one million dollars repusing the tank because preventative maintenance won't perform in the interim.
Does it have, was it discussed before, which one will be painted next year, is one on schedule for next year to be painted, or is it not?
I don't, I don't really deal with one of them, so year one, the. Mid Street tank would be washed out, and cemetery would be repainted on the exterior. And cemetery tank is the green, not.
Is, is it the second oldest? Is the cemetery the second oldest?
I think, yes, it is the second oldest.
Okay.
I know for a fact, Smith Street, or Fifth, South Fifth Street, or Lawrence Tank, as we call it, was built in nineteen thirty-eight, I believe, or nineteen thirty-four, um, is by far the oldest. Mid Street, we're doing some work on it, it's a little bit of a miracle, with, this is a little bit harder to gauge, but cemetery is probably, it's a name that's oldest for sure. I think it's fifty-eight, if I'm not mistaken, I think there's one in the fifties, and Hanes is the seventies, I'm pretty sure, but cemetery will get things first, and it's much needed. But it would also do visual inspections each year for our tanks outside and inside, to make sure there were no deformities, and then, some of our tanks were adding cell phone towers too, this company would work with the city to make sure that whatever these cell phone carriers presented to put on our tanks would not damage the tank at all, and that we're not doing more harm than we are receiving revenue for.
Uh, another big, uh, fact that's happening in this, in this cycle, is that we are putting out the, um, I believe it's thirty-eight year old contract for the, finally, wastewater treatment, uh, operations, for that, um, as you recall, Blackman Labs has had that for quite some time, uh, since nineteen eighty-five, and it gone four percent every single year from that inception, uh, Clear Water Solutions bought Blackman Labs out the day after we signed the contract with Blackman Labs, so we have them as. Uh, Clearwater Solutions bought Blackman Labs out the day after we signed the contract with Blackman Labs, so we have them as our new partner. Um, they did that for across the board, Blackman Labs had several things in the area. Um, we feel that it's time for us to reevaluate this contract, uh, to help the city to make sure, to be, you know, we should always do that at some point. And so we're putting this out for bid, Clearwater had been notified of the termination of the contract, and we put it out for bid going forward, it's a ninety-day process. Um, but we're confident we're going to be able to get, um, better service, we believe, out of it because the contract was lacking in some areas. Um, as we get forward, you guys will be, uh, aware of what we get back and what the costs are going to be associated with that, but we're using the same local budgeting that we have in this one, to keep it, um, just to make sure we can pay for everything, but I am also hoping for a lower cost, um, based on, again, the contract, because you see it's been artificially increased to four percent every year. Any questions about that? And that's going to be, as we get forward, we'll have more information.
And the other thing you see in the maintenance contracts quickly is the asset management program, and this is a really good, uh, through CIP. Um, and it's bigger than important. I completely agree with Phillip, I'm happy to have someone here that is excited to get this done, we know it's something that comes up, it actually comes up in our debt calls, and I have to tell them that we're working towards this when I have the credit rating calls. So this software will help them to make a slow, with asset management, which I just can imagine they have in some assets.
Alright. Next up.
Is Howard too?
My mouse is better. Alright, next we have Neptune Island Water, uh, so this is a good breakdown. Um, as you can see, we have an increase to showers and benefits, operating expense and the capitalist ventures, um, the lion's share of the showers and benefits is going to be. We had to increase the pay for our staff, uh, for the temp staff, um, we were, what's going to be? Showers and benefits, yeah, the temp staff. So, the big, the big deal here is that, um, part-time staff, or part-time pay is kind of across the board. Um, just thank Puckeys, I guess, for that.
I guess so.
Yeah, Puckeys, um, and McDonald's and all stuff, so we're having stiff competition, uh, for, so we had to increase our lifeguards, particularly our pay, because as you guys remember, last year, um, it's tough to keep a lifeguard, um, and so what we did is we did increase the rates, I believe we're going up to for a base lifeguard at fourteen dollars now, and that was up from eleven dollars. And the response has been tremendous, um, we are getting more applications than we have got in the last couple of years, so we feel this is a good move. Um, we do have, uh, we feel there's going to be an increase in the, um, revenues we get from water park, we're getting history. And something that is exciting is that if we do go forward with the, um, splash pad renovations, that also operate, opens up opportunities for increased revenues. Just by adding cavanas, I think they estimate five additional cavanas, that's an increase of almost fifteen thousand dollars to revenues. It's cadaver rentals, everyone loves cavanas, fifty thousand, excuse me.
Yeah, because you'll have that, that's right, that's the weekday, just the weekday, fifty thousand, the weekend with the thirty thousand.
And then maybe with the splash pad, this is just by, we can also look at increasing the admissions slightly.
Absolutely.
Um, again, still being in that, if you look at our admissions compared to like mortgage returns, it's, we're completely affordable for people, so that's what we did. And so the, um, the overall, um, increase to, just by adding the splash pad, we think it'll get us a hundred fifty thousand dollar increase in revenues, just by adding the splash pad, so they'll pay for it. Uh, but largely, we're noticing that this, the revenues are continuing to go up, we have less operating days, but it's more condensed. Um, and if we can maintain the staffing, which we're doing, Neptune Island continues to perform as it was intended to do, which, as we all know, the bond was taken out to keep costs low for general admissions, so that we break even by having back a lot of water and hospitality funds. Um, so, if you guys wanted to, you know, get away from that, we have to increase the permissions to be on the floor with some people up here, so. That's the water park, um, any questions about it?
Yeah, our goal, and we talked about, and he alluded to, was that we do keep admissions affordable. Um, one thing with this splash pad, last summer, um, it was built in two thousand thirteen, um, I was researching and online and begging for overnight delivery for the pumps and parts, it's outdated.
They're going down, we had a bug, we, that was a poor deal, I ended that up, okay.
So, um, it was a lot of phone calls, um, to try to get something overnight for California, because they're not, they're not making it anymore because it is outdated, it is blank, it is, it is time for, one thing you'll notice as well is that it's kind of pieced me off, when they did it, you know, it was kind of like a test case, I feel like when they built parks, so to see how this could go, and it was, um, multiple pieces, with this renovation, one thing it would be, it's going to be one structure, one for all, um, and that it wouldn't have the height restrictions that we have now. Um, we would have, be able to have some dispatchers over here, they don't have to be full blown lifeguards, which is great, they don't have to have the same training, it's a dispatcher level you get over there. And, um, or that this is going to be an all-inclusive type play, which is the, uh, the big push there is, instead of everyone can play.
It's, the bottom line is that if we, uh, we do need to do a renovations splash pad, it's been ten years old, and again, we're having trouble maintaining it. If we don't do it this year, we're going to have to do it again at some point.
It's a service.
Uh, we, we feel like it's a good time at year six, and then be ready by year seven, it's a good opportunity, because if we don't, then we'll be ready by year eight, this is going to be lively this year. Um, so that's, and again, the other, um, capitalist ventures that we go into, these are general maintenance things for a six-year-old park, those slides take a beating. Uh, the slide, the main slides need to be redone. Um, also something that we did get some comments from last year, the chairs need to be replaced, um, those have a twenty-three thousand dollar investment, um, those are, people sit on those and we need to make sure that they're comfortable. Um, we want to make sure the park looks like it did day one, that's the point, so keep it up.
I would say they're doing the best with what they can, right now we do have work crews out, um, but we're not having the capital investment there, that we're going to be limited to what I can get work crew to paint. They're doing the best they can with what they have.
So I wanted, wanted to ask, um, have we looked at state slides to complete eating and whatever, um, to make sure we're looking at those specs for the cold crack temperature.
Oh, yes, absolutely.
Absolutely, and we work with a slide restoration company as well that helps us, but our staff out there, our maintenance staff are the ones that maintain that.
Because I don't want to happen to us what happened to us with the victims memorial park.
Sure.
So, that, that's why I learned that earlier.
Okay, yeah.
Um, because that was not considered, and we went into, had to pay a lot of money for that, or no written design.
So we're, uh, we maintain, we have this constantly inspected, the main thing is, is this is general use veriteer that we're accustomed to, just so you know that this haven't been replaced, it's six years old, the tower's six years old. Um, another thing that, the liner, as I mentioned before, I believe, um, if any of you of us have been there, you felt the folds, it is a liner that's in that hole, it has a lifetime warranty though, so even though it has a lifetime warranty, you still pay a hundred sixty-seven thousand dollars for labor to fix all those folds. Um, we, again, that just, it's generally, we have to maintain this part.
I'm gonna say here, it's, um, asking something about, I take, you know, I don't put things, they're going to do important. That's why we did this, and I reached out to financial advisors, and I got what our additional, what our payments to wire. Um, we worked together to come up with a lay to ensure that I can cover the additional costs, so that's where it is paying into play. And I did a, is it something we can afford, is it something we can sustain, and we can.
Right.
Even the ticket price issue, because this will be a brand new feature, and it won't be hyper restricted, which is awesome, um, and then we'll increase all to, and we have increased season passes in years. So it's pretty spectacular that we still run it the way we do, um, and had our biggest season yet last year. So it, it was not something taken lightly, that's honestly, they're trying to figure this out, um, but I feel comfortable with where we found it, but.
Well, I mean, and I think the impact this has to the area, we bring this many people, it just, that's something. Anyway.
One other thing, we, we all hope that we have a normal year this year for days open in commission, and we also know, all of us sitting around the table, it's unusual for a municipality to own a water park. But sometime in the future, when we really have a good year and have a normal year, and we see what the impact is on the city, and if we like that, and if not, then there's probably a discussion we need to have, is do we need to be in the water park business, or should we have that in private? I know that if it's probably somebody running it here in COVID, they would probably just shut it down, so I'm glad we had it and everything, and at some point in time, we have to look at that and just look at the revenue that come back to us, on the city's end, and still draw people to our, so it's wonderful to handle attraction. Do we need to be running that attraction? Maybe we do, maybe we don't.
Um, I would, I would say if we ever get to that, I would hope we would have multiple discussions about it, because I would heavily advocate that we keep it, because of what we do community outreach wise, that's the reason why we got to, to M A C awards. And because what we do for the local youth, you know, one reason why we did get it, is something that when I built this water park, it was something that never had thought about, um, was going to be the flip side of this, and it's working with two hundred local youth.
And I think that's a good point, I think we.
It's, it's more than the money.
It's also something versus the value.
Absolutely.
And I think the value far exceeds the cost.
Well, you treat it like a recreation, right?
Yeah.
Recreation is not designed to make money. It can make some money, but that is a core function of government recreation, and so it is something that we can do, and we depart with people, and it's, it's a no-brainer to have quality recreation, there's nothing else in this area that brings it to smooth people, nothing.
Well, and you know, we had some curveballs from, and us changing school year, COVID, things like that, you know, things going down, and I think we persevered through all of that, and it's been tough.
Even with the lowest amount of operating days we've had this past year, we still had seventy-six operating days, but three weeks of raining days that were closed. And we still had almost two million dollars of revenue for additions, and almost, almost the largest amount of people we've ever had in the park.
And it was a daily record.
Daily record.
Average over a thousand a day.
So, and this type of stuff when we expand can also increase if, um, people can bring to the park correct, we start expanding out.
We're not only, um, using.
I don't know, it comes from all over.
It comes from all over.
Absolutely.
Someone, someone would still be staffing their youth, would still.
Absolutely, but we manage that, we develop internship programs, having our folks on that, and able to do something for them, maybe it's, maybe it's different because we've built the relationships with these youth until we see it, and I mean, a lot of people from private industry, if you don't have the passion for it, or you don't have the development inspiration for youth, it's not going to be ran the same. And I think with it being physically on our property, it would be something that we want to hold on to. One other thing that we do and that we advocate for even more that we push for is that we're all learning tickets to tournaments when they come to town, right, for all the players. There's so much that we do around it, um, yeah, if that ever did come up, I would, I would just have.
Well, I was all in favor, and I still am, I'm just saying, at some point, we evaluate this, just like we evaluate sure everything else.
Absolutely.
Absolutely, you know, just, you can, maybe this conversation, this is up for, for you.
Any other questions? Well, I mean, it's, Bobby's absolutely correct, we had, this has been a private company, however, COVID, they were shut down.
It's, it's.
Um, we can, lunch is. So we are at a pretty good stop, because we want to stop a little early, because we can stop, or we can do sensation fund first, and then take our stop.
I said, we could just go eat and.
We can also eat through lunch.
Right.
Lunch, lunch, just we eat.
Let's eat for a few minutes, and then I'll start finishing off, give the presentation.
Sure.